You guys ready? Come on in. Seven o'clock, and we have a forum. Would you please rise? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome. First order of business, approval of the minutes. I was not here, so I must abstain. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Do we have a second? We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I abstain. Motion carries four oh. Before we start our public meeting, the town council did meet an executive session for a few minutes to receive some information about economic incentives. So just to let the public know that we did meet, and no decision was made. All right, now, let's start our public meeting. Plan Commission appointment. Laura, this...
We advertised in The Republican and on social media, and we received two applications, and those are in your packets. This is a council president appointment for the balance of the term from a member of the Plan Commission who is, has resigned.
Okay, I have reviewed both applications, looked at their resumes, looked at the application that they filled out. I do not know either one of these individuals. They have not contacted me, I have not contacted them. So I must go based on the information that I have here at hand, and my recommendation, or my appointment to the Plan Commission will be to offer Cody Sheets this position till the end of the term, which is December 31st, 2018. Is Cody in here? Okay, Cody. Laura, can you contact him?
We'll contact him tomorrow and let him know.
All right. Thank you. All right, ordinance number six, 2018, Gordon Graham Airport Annex Phase Two adoption.
This ordinance comes to you tonight for adoption after its two-and-a-half-month ordeal through the process, and is adopted, we'll wait 30 days to record, and then we'll begin Phase Three, and that'll be the final phase.
Okay. Council's had an opportunity. Take a look at ordinance six, 2018. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move that we approve, adopt, approve and adopt ordinance six, 2018, annexing a portion of Gordon Graham Airport Phase Two into the town.
All right, do we have, I have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All of those in favor of approving ordinance six, 2018, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five oh. All right, the third order of business. We're ripping through this today, kids. Request for qualifications, water and wastewater master plan. Jerry? Good evening.
Good evening. The Water and Wastewater put together a request for qualifications to seek an engineering firm to do a 20-year master plan, and the folks from Strand Engineering helped us put that together, and I'd like to give them a chance to introduce themselves. We're gonna put it out for any engineering firm to give us their qualifications, but because they helped us prepare it, I thought it'd be nice to introduce them, or let them introduce themselves.
Ladies first.
My name's Amber Porter. I met a few of you guys when I was here a few months ago, I attended this meeting. Known Jerry for a little bit. We've been, obviously, working on this together. And just a quick little background of Strand, and I do have little handouts to pass out to you guys, with just some information on our firm. But we are a full-service civil and environmental engineering consulting firm. We have two offices in Indiana, one in Columbus and one in Indianapolis, and we're a mid-sized engineering firm mainly in the Midwest, based out of Madison, Wisconsin, and we have around 400 employees. And we do work primarily in water, wastewater, transportation, and stormwater. We also do building and facilities, aviation, and some other things like that. This is Matt, or Matt Smith, and Mac McCauley.
Yeah, my name's Matt Smith. I'm been with Strand for my whole career, 14 years. I do water and wastewater engineering, as Mac does as well. As a firm, we do a lot of work in Indiana. We work for a lot of si, a lot of communities this size. We work for Greensburg, Connersville, Tipton, Elwood, Bargersville, some bigger ones, some smaller ones, but a lot of them right around this size. We do, do a lot of this sort of work.
Yeah, I don't have much to add to that. I'm Mac McCauley, project manager down in Columbus, Indiana. Been, been there four years, been in the industry 17, and I do primarily water and wastewater.
Anybody in your firm, every guy in your firm named Matt?
No, he's Matt, I'm Mac.
Oh, Matt. Okay, thank you.
Very different.
I thought there was something a little clickish going on here. Wanted to get that cleared up right away.
We all wear blue shirts.
We like mics, though, so fit right in.
That's right. Good deal.
They did work at the Columbus, Indiana plant, gave me a tour of that.
Any questions from the council? You done yet?
Yeah. We're done.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your help. Do you feel pretty good about this RFQ?
Yeah, we've got the dates spread out far enough that it should be easy to accept and review and get things started and wrapped up within a year.
Okay, Laura, do we just need a motion to have this put out?
Yeah, if you're satisfied with the scope of service, and give Jerry the call, and get it sent out.
I am.
For a motion?
I'm waiting for a motion.
I move that we approve the distribution of a request for qualifications for water and wastewater. That's prepared.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any further discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries five oh.
Thank you.
Send the way. We get some good response. I think we got one. Okay. While you're up here, let's go to department reports.
I provided my report, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Any overflows?
We did. As we're doing our asset management, means we're looking at every single manhole in town, and we did catch a dead end that spilled roughly 50 gallons in a woodsy area, so we put some lime on it, cutted the lines, and so there, there's definitely some good work being done on the asset management, and that's banning engineering.
Any concerns about the upcoming weather? I saw the forecast that said two to three inches of rain over the course of the week. What do you find with that?
Well, we had four inches last weekend, and, well, the weekend before last, and we were okay, dry enough to have some extra capacity.
Any questions for Jerry? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Laura.
A couple of quick items. Obviously, I continue to work with engineers that are working on various site plans around town. I referenced all of those in my last report a couple weeks ago. The redevelopment commission met for their monthly meeting on Thursday, and they'll be coming to you with some ideas in the future. That group is very excited about what they can do and where they can lead their strategic plan. BZA meeting is tomorrow. We only have one item, it's just a minor sign request. Just so you know, Endeavor has started their fiber extension project in Barry Knoll, so that has actively started this Monday, and there's flags and equipment everywhere, so looking forward to that progress to report on. Obviously, it's summertime, so dealing with a lot of public nuisance requests, and if you have any, feel free to email me or text me, call me, and I will get on those and investigate them. We've had some complaints come in regarding the very interesting and challenging intersection at Tennessee, Blake, Cartersburg, and whom I'm missing, Lake Lincoln. So, you know, there's multiple collision points there. So, as a result, rather than just us coming up with some suggestions from staff, I contacted Chet Skorkin with Traffic Engineering to put together a proposal just to examine what might we do at that location, some recommend, recommendations for safety improvements. So, when I have that proposal, I'll be bringing that back to you and see if you want to pursue some of those improvements.
County came to us a long time ago.
Yeah.
We didn't jump on it at the time. I think it was that big. I go through that intersection every morning and every afternoon, and there've been some near misses.
Lots.
I've not, I've not seen any accidents. There've been some interesting times.
Yeah. I think there's a lot of near misses that obviously would not generate an accident report, but we've looked at that data, and there's not been a lot of actual collisions there, so...
Yeah.
But it's always those close calls, and do you want to try and avoid something that could be very hazardous, or, you know?
We might also want to talk to school transportation, because I watch how the bus has to take the short right to be able to make that turn, going south, and then swing out wide to avoid a house.
Yeah.
That may warrant a little bit closer attention.
Yeah, and actually, the traffic engineer did request that we talk to the folks who manage the buses to see if they had ideas, so we'll definitely be doing that. This doesn't mean a roundabout, okay? Just so you know, you know, we're just looking at what are some minor, small-level improvements that we can do to maybe improve it in the long run. So, just giving you a heads up to look for that in the near future. And then the lastly, and Will might speak to this as well, but One Choice is working on a host project that you approved in the 1918, or 2018 budget, 1918? And it's a major overhaul of our server. We also had to update our switch, which is very important. Everything that comes into this building gets distributed through that, and then, of course, our battery power wasn't working and hadn't been for some time, so that was all part of that project that you approved, so those activities are taking place now. We hope to see a lot of improvements out of it. That's it for me. Any questions?
Questions for Laura? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Morgan?
I've placed the fire department report in front of you. Be happy to answer any questions while you're perusing the report. We've had, we've cut back on our water usage just because we know consumption right now is pretty heavy on Jim's end, so we've been not doing any real water training or flowing water. With the heat, we've tried to stay, do some indoor training as opposed to outdoor. However, we are going out, starting tomorrow, we'll be working with the Washington Township Avon Fire Department in doing some of probably what's considered the most dangerous fires we fight, which are basement fires. They're extremely difficult, because if you think about the way a stairwell comes up out of a basement, it's, it's like walking into the chimney of your fireplace, because that's the vent where the heat's gonna come out. So, we'll be working with them tomorrow in some training on that. They've got a house in their district that they've used enough that they're getting ready to burn it, so we'll be doing some live fires for the next three days in their district, so. Other than that, I have nothing new to report, and again, would be happy to entertain any questions over the, my report.
Questions for Chief Morgan? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Water department. Jimmy? Oh, there you are. In the back, hanging with the students in the back. Good for you.
Yes, always listen, though. Like Mark said, appreciate the fire department curtailing water training. That, we had the, we're pumping fair amount of water, usually averaging over a million gallons a day. When we had the last big rain event, that we had, pumping dropped about 250,000 gallons, so that kind of gives you an idea how much more usage there is on top of that. Last Friday, we started, pulled this water tank down out west that's gonna get rehabbed. We drained it. By Sunday, it was completely drained. We thought that the contractor was gonna be here today. They're a week out. Apparently, they have weather issues somewhere else. So I contacted Kent, and they got ahold of me, and, and we're real happy that the contractor did not contact them ahead of time, or I could've probably left water in the tank another week during these hot periods, had a little more storage. But we're gonna, we're maintained, we'll be fine, but it's just the idea of trying to hurry and try to get stuff done for, in preparation for them to come out and get things started, and they are on a contract, so that'll be on them. Then tomorrow, Bass and Logan will be out to install the other conversion for the variable frequency drive out the West Pump Station. Hopefully, you'll have that in service this week. I'm gonna try to, providing I get my control guy, if he's not on vacation. If not, it'll be the following week, but that is gonna get put in. That station's working pretty well, and I don't seem to have any issues with it. I think we got some more water hammer issues at the plant taken care of. We changed, put a butterfly valve in on the pump, as well as a new check valve assembly. That seemed to help, and then also, too, a contact from my control guy. He, the frequency drives it ramp it up slowly. We were able to ramp it down slowly for a slow, slow start, slow stop, so that seems to hopefully cut down the water hammer from when the pump shut off, which water hammer will create problems, which we think, hopefully, that'll drop that down a bunch, but doing like that. We're getting ready to, also, Bass and Logan be coming out. We've got one pump that we had completely rebuilt. It's kind of vibrating heavy. They're gonna come out and pull in the motor is tomorrow and switch the motor on top of it and see, make sure it isn't the upper bearing in the motor. If not, if it's a pump itself, they'll come and pull that pump and have to take care of that on their own dime. So, so, yeah, 'cause it just lasts three months, three months ago, so it shouldn't be vibrating like that, and so we'll get that taken care of. But other than that, conserve.
Thanks for staying on top of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We try to, try to do that. Like I said, I was on vacation, but I always constantly check on my tablet so I can access and make sure things are working like they should. Do you have any questions?
Questions for Jim?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Barry?
I have just a couple of updates and a couple of new items. I'm sure everybody wants to talk about all the destruction that we've done to the streets on the north side of town. We've had a couple of curveballs. The first one we talked about in the earlier, the last meeting, this one was a illicit discharge. We found a pipe coming in one of the storm structures that was raw waste, raw sewage coming from the White House at the corner. Let's see, that would be the northeast corner of Clinton and Columbia. So from, it was going down to North Street and Wayne, so it's like 900 feet that this pipe traveled. We found a, basically a septic tank that was covered up, and what happens, I won't get too in detail, 'cause it's nasty, but it drops, it drops the solids out into a box, and then the liquids go up, you know, build up, and then they go down the pipe. That was what we found going into the storm. So we immediately blocked that pipe, camered upstream as far as we could go, dig a hole, put the camera in, go as far as we could go, cut the hole, dig, that's how we tracked it back, and what we did is we opened up a big, you know, basically a hole in the ground so that it wouldn't back up into the house or the structure, but yet it wasn't going into the storm. So that took basically a better part of three days to find, and then they're working on it currently right now, so it kind of set us back about a week. I'm hoping, weather permitting, and if we don't have any more curveballs, or we don't find anything under the pavement that we didn't know was there, I'm hoping within two weeks, we will be completely done with all the pipe. With that said, not only do we have pipe to do, we have to do all the sidewalks, and whenever you put a new sidewalk in, it's gotta be ADA compliant, according to the 2012 ADA compliance from the federal government. Anyway, long story short, that takes a while, because a lot of our roads are offset, they're not in line, so when you do a ramp, you gotta kind of strategically put them into the right place. But, so, yeah, so now we have to put sidewalks back in after we put the pipe in, and then after we put the sidewalks in, then we'll come back and trim up the pavement that we cut, and we'll patch the roads, and then Ray can pave. So, it's gonna be a little bit. He's been really, Ray has been really helpful, Ray Whitaker. He's been really helpful in getting the sidewalks back in, giving me the help, offering his guys to help any way they can. We're all pretty busy, and that's pretty much it with that project. We also, I talked to Will about, one of the reasons we saved Wayne Street as the last one to go. We have an intersection at Wayne and Columbia, and then we have the one here at Clinton in the building. He's got, is it summer camp? He has summer camp, and it's a real difficulty, 'cause we're gonna have to close the road. Now, it's only gonna be closed for a day, but it makes it really difficult for the kids to get in and out of there safely, because the alleyway's pretty tough to navigate, but... So I'll work out, work that out with him. I think the next place we go will be Columbia, so we'll have to stop Columbia, come up the hill around at the park, and then they'll be able to get, sorry, be able to get by, but, yeah, so I think that's it for that project. There was nine new single-family residential dwelling permits issued this last month, so the month prior, I told you that it slowed down, so I'm just paying for it this month. Also, we have Section Six of Four Oaks, had a pre-construction meeting with them. They're starting a new section out there, and they're, they're telling me that things are really good, and they're selling lots. So, it looks like the foreseeable future is fairly busy. I know I talked to Jenny a couple of times about what we thought our, our permits were gonna be for 2018, 2019, but things are probably busy, pretty busy right now. Also, Monday morning, I had a call from, at 6:30, that the chiller wasn't working, like off, no power. So, met with Precision Controls, and after about two hours of trying to find out what it was, it was a fuse with 480 volts going to it, and that particular fuse fed the control panel, which shut down the controls. Got that back up and running, but we found another fan motor that's bad, so we're gonna have to replace a fan motor. We've replaced seven out of 10, this is number eight. So before long, we'll have all new fan motors on the chiller, and then maybe we can get a break for one summer. We'll see. That's really all I have. Hope I didn't take too much of your time.
Are most of those permits out of forums?
Yes, ma'am. Seven. There was two in Wexford, and I believe there's another one coming, I've heard, but I, another one coming at Rotan Estates, so that's, that's about all I have.
Anything else for Barry? Thank you.
Thanks.
Will?
Gonna be quick and easy today. First, I'd like to introduce Erica Gamir. She's our intern for the summer. She's awesome. She's been taking on some of the camp stuff and really hitting it hard, so if you see her, tell her hi. Jumping into the pool, we have over 650 memberships, which is really good. We're about 10 to 15% up from last year. I mean, the weather probably is helping that, I'm sure, but it's also has a negative effect, too, is our equipment seems to be failing quite often. So, we're just having to work harder, but the good thing is, you know, everything's functioning, and it's packed all the time. I don't know if you've driven by there, but the park is really packed in general. Let's see here. Fee adjustments, so next month, we talked about, I'm gonna bring you some possible adjustments to the park fees for 2018, kind of like a start date, but we were thinking about passing them now.
Do what?
2019. 2019, yeah. 2018, look at it, 2019 would be the start, just in case there's any changes or anything like that. Nothing really major, just some, moving some things around to make them a little simpler, so. Also, tennis court lights. Did a lot of this work in-house. We're almost there. We have them functional now. We actually used them for the tennis, the pickleball tournament we had last week, and we're, they're gonna be coin-operated, so people can use them on their own, and they'll turn off on their own, so hopefully, it's not really gonna bring in any money, but at the same time, it's gonna be on and off situated, so we don't have to worry about the vandalism side of it, if someone just popping them on in the middle of the night, so. And all of them turn on, but will light bulb, which is surprising, 'cause they haven't worked in like eight years, so. And then hiring, also, we put an offer out to a part-time person, Terrachromer, resigned a couple of weeks ago, and so we're getting someone to fill that position, and we think we have someone, we're meeting with her tomorrow, so we'll have someone new on our side. That's all I have.
Questions? Thank you. Or did you?
The graffiti and the pickleball.
Yeah, we, so we immediately, before anyone used the pickleball, we tarped it, called the contractor, and they were like, hey, we'll get you paint, so we drove out, got paint, but it takes 48 hours to cure, so we couldn't paint it for a couple of days, but we had it tarped, so no one could see what was under the tarp. But, yeah, we got it fixed and, and moving forward. We got hit pretty hard with some graffiti, but, you know, for our staff, it's the faster we can get it done, faster we can make it disappear, then it doesn't repeat itself usually. We've had some Shelter One, Shelter Two, repeat offenders, but we've been going over and talking to them quite often, kind of agitating them so they'll move on, and the process seems to work. Also, been working with Ray. He's got the guys out there circling in, kind of checking it out, too, so when our powers combined, we, hopefully, we'll scare them away.
Do we got any cameras in the area?
Yeah, we have cameras, and we tried to trail cam, but the problem is, you never catch them doing the actual deed, so it's like, you know, you have them there, you know, kind of who it is, but you never caught the actual act, so it makes it kind of hard, so. Really, the only thing we can do, you know, add lights, you know, when we upgrade those cameras, we're looking at 2019, that's our plan on the IT committee. We're doing some planning now to bring you something, probably a little bit before 2019, but to start thinking about it for maybe a host project next year, kind of doing the whole town as one big umbrella.
Is it happening after the park has been closed?
Yes, because I catch them, I don't know that it's them, but I'm catching a group in Shelter One and Shelter Two past, it's right at 10:30, but then they see my camera and they leave, and they still do stuff around, but they know where the camera is, so they just kind of avoid it. Yeah.
Can you lock the pickleball, please?
We can lock it, but we have cameras right there. It's just hard, 'cause if they want it, they'd just climb the fence, and that's the hard part. And then we'd have to have staff come in, too, every night and close down, so then you're looking at probably extra hours as well. And we thought about maybe using a magnetic lock system, too, to where maybe we can, 'cause we, we're using that currently on the North Park Restrooms. We could probably figure out something, but it's gonna take some thinking to get that to work, but I think we could probably do something.
The speed bumps in the road?
Yeah, so we talked in our, I don't know what meeting you wanna call that, but new development meeting or something, was, some of the department heads are getting together and talking about projects, you know, trying to keep each other on the same page, and in that, we kind of talked about the speed bumps and some options, some speed humps or speed tables as options, and then also, we talked about painting the ground as an option, too, just so it brings your mind aware to it, or, you know, signage on both sides when you're going through. So, I think we have some ideas, we just need to get some numbers together so that we can move forward on that, but, yeah, it's definitely two areas, I definitely see that as a need.
It's a great park, very vibrant. The pickleball is wonderful.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to find a parking spot there, Saturday or Sunday.
It's really a, a good thing for our town. Thank you for taking care of it.
Thank you.
Anything else? Hey, thank you. Ray?
Good evening. As I was last here, we've done some signage, we've done some street sweeping, we've cleaned a few trees up out of the street, four or five, maybe six, I can hardly remember now. We have started a major paving project, North Morgan, South Morgan is being held up by the gas company putting gas main down through there, so we're holding the papers off on that. And North Wayne, North Tennessee, Columbia Street is being held up by storm sewers going in. I have put my full crew on helping Barry get the sidewalks put back in, and we're making progress every day on that. So, hopefully, within the next two weeks, that project will be done, and papers can come back in and finish paving. Laura and I have talked about the bids. We're gonna have another meeting to decide who hits the low bid. And we're making progress every day on that. So, hopefully, within the next two weeks, that project will be done and papers can come back in and finish paving. Laura and I have talked about the bids. We're going to have another meeting to decide who hits the low bid for the next paving project. The town square is in Phase Two. Phase One has already been completed in one week's time. So, Guy is moving right along. Keith is staying ahead of him, which is amazing. The paving on the south side of town, on Jefferson, Washington, Lake, and Mulberry is completed. Penn Street, Sunny Lane, 300 is completed minus the striping. We only have one mobilization for the painters, so we have to wait until the whole project is done for them to come in and do the striping. So, that's what that holdup is. We've been helping Jerry do emergency surcuts in the road and taking care of that sort of thing, helping Jimmy on water leaks where needed, and like I said, helping Barry. Any questions?
Columbia Street, you got any ideas for that? Columbia Street?
Yeah, it's on the paving list.
Yeah, do you know when?
Within two weeks, if we can get the storm sewers in and the sidewalks put back. I'm pushing.
And are you responsible, are we responsible for the road that comes off Columbia Street and up through Wexford, the shaded part there with all the holes were?
No, that is County Road 50 East. That is a county road. We did slip out there and do some patching. They were bad, but that is not the town road. That is a county road.
Do you talk to those people or is that our place to talk to them and ask them if they could take care of that road?
No, I did not. I followed orders.
No, no, I don't mean that. I mean, the county people.
No, I have not talked to the county people about it. I was following orders and I took care of it.
Okay, thank you.
I can elaborate on that as soon as you're done. I'll elaborate on his questions whenever you're ready. Are you done?
Any more questions for Ray?
A question I have, so when do you expect the Washington to be done on the square? And will they immediately then move to Jefferson?
Washington should be done by the end of the week, if not the first of next week. Guy has one other project that he has already promised he would do, so there will be a break between Washington and Jefferson. What that timeframe is, Marcia, I don't know. I'm going to guess 20 days or so, and then he has told me that he will start. So, I know what your concern is as far as Farmers Market. We will have to move, and I'll let you know ahead of time, we'll have to move Farmers Market to Washington Street.
I'd like to comment on your sidewalks and your curbs are wonderfully done, professionally done.
Thank you.
Can't believe the quality of them, they're very nice. Thank you.
Anything else? Ed, Dennis?
Ed, are you ready?
Thank you.
So, with regard to County Road 50 East, because of the pothole issue and a lot of residents don't know that they are, aren't in town because they have a Danville address. And we actually do have annexed property, Wexford and Oak Bluff. So, there's this little no man's land, which has been neglected by both the town and the county, obviously, because of the condition of the road. So, in a conversation with John Ayers, I asked, what would it take if we wanted to take the road over? How would we assume getting the lane mileage for it? Because that's key. That's where we get our revenue to keep maintaining it. And so, he said there is a mechanism and it has been done before, even though you don't annex both sides of the road in one particular spot, but everything else before and after is. So, he's researching that as he can get back to us so that we can explore going ahead and taking that over. It's, you know, less than quarter of a mile and it just makes sense, particularly if we can get that lane mileage. And then at least we know the street is ours for our maintenance. It seems silly to have them lift the plow or us lift the plow for that little segment. So, it's one of those cooperative efforts that we have with the county for these little segments of streets that are in town but not annexed. So, we are addressing it and hopefully, when we have that information from the county, we'll bring it back to you.
Good? Chief Rainey?
President, Town Council members, during the 6:00 PM Police Commission meeting tonight, the Police Commissioners unanimously approved my recommendation to give a conditional offer of employment to Brandon Blynn. Brandon comes from a family of police officers. His father's retired police officer and his brother was just recently hired this year by the Hendrix County Sheriff's Department. Brandon is a patient administrative specialist in the United States Army Reserve. He is currently employed as a hardwood floor finish technician. He's a 2012 graduate of Cascade High School and attended Indiana State University, earning 46 hours of college credit. He's 26 years old and he resides in Clayton. To be given a full offer or an acceptance for employment on the town's part is he will have to successfully complete the physical testing and psychological testing that's mandated by the Public Employees Retirement Fund before being employed here. This month, on May the 30th, excuse me, in May, May the 30th, Officers Travis Wilson and Bernard Magnum were sworn in by Judge Dan Zielinski. Today, Officer Wilson reported to the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy, but again, his 16 weeks of training. He will graduate from the academy September the 28th. On May the 9th, I hosted the Hendrix County Chiefs, a meeting that we try to have monthly. It also includes the Hendrix County Sheriff as well as the Speedway Police Department. This, in May, firearms qualifications were held on May the 10th and the 11th, resulting in all officers requalifying, as well as we had several officers that completed inline service training during the month of May. On the stat sheet that I provided you prior to this meeting, I think what I want to bring to your attention is how well our department did with criminal arrests. We had 43 criminal arrests in May with total runs of 733, and we took 66 reports. Glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Chief Rainey?
Thank you.
Okay, anything from the public? No one? Great, best chance. Laura?
Just a reminder, we have a budget meeting a week from tonight, 7:00 PM.
Kenny?
Nothing, thank you.
I know I wasn't here at the time, but condolences go out to the Jensen family. Richie was a very interesting person and very involved in the town. Other than that, shout out to my online students who are actually following my rules. Thank you very much. One of the few, the proud, the brave. Turn your bogus ones, depending on how we write this up. Claim docket. I got double motions. That means I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I missed the first motion.
It was a tie.
Listen, Marcia, thank you, I'm sorry, I missed the first one.
So, Dennis and Marcia? That's how I heard.
Sure, let's go with that.
Thank you.
All right, any discussion about the claim docket? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Claim docket's approved. Good night, enjoy the 85 degrees out there.
Eighty-five.
Hit the pool. Erica, I need to see you. You're evil henchwoman.